Senate Committee Room, B 306. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com/AtSenateOfVirginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com/AtSenateOfVirginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com/AtSenateOfVirginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com/AtSenateOfVirginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, B 306.
Our meeting is called to order. Good afternoon and thank you all so much for being here. I am Senator Angela Williams Graves, Chair of the Committee, and we are going to start with roll call.
Senator Hashmi, Senator Williams Graves.
Here.
Delegate Mundan King. Delegate Runyon.
Here.
Delegate Glass.
Here.
Delegate Teta.
Here.
Delegate Barbara Enman.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Dr. Janita Kearney. Cameron Patterson.
Here.
Joan Johns-Cobs.
Here.
Paris Turner.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you so much. First, I wanted to say to all of the members who are present, I want to thank you for making this commission a priority on your schedules. As you know, we can't do any of this work without a quorum. I mean, we can have conversations, but we can't actually do work without a quorum. And I understand things come up and, you know, last minute and all of that. But I just want to say I appreciate you all for making this a priority and for being here so that we can handle the business of the Brown versus Board of Education Scholarship Committee. So thank you so much for taking the time. At this time, we need to review the electronic meeting policy, and so let's do that.
Yes, Madam Chair, under current law, a public body must adopt a participation policy before using remote participation or conducting all virtual meetings, all virtual public meetings. The committee has not adopted an electronic policy for this year. The committee last adopted its electronic policy on May 9, 2023. Then changes in the code have been made that require bodies to adopt such a policy at least once a year and revise the numerical limit on all virtual public meetings to two meetings or 50% of a public body's meetings per year. A prepared draft policy is in your packets for consideration.
Any questions on the electronic policy? We are slowly inching to the 21st century with our electronic participation. I personally would like to see it go much farther than it does, but it's what we've got, and so it is what we will work with. We need to vote on this, correct? I need a motion.
Madam Chair, so moved to approve the policy.
And is that a recorded vote? All right, just call roll.
Senator Hashmi, Senator Williams Graves.
Aye.
Delegate Mundan King. Delegate Runyon.
Aye.
Delegate Glass.
Aye.
Teta.
Aye.
Barbara Enman.
Aye.
Janita Kearney. Cameron Patterson.
Aye.
Joan Johns-Cobs.
Aye.
Paris Turner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no zero, or nose zero.
Thank you. The motion passes. All right, so we will have a scholarship program fund update by our committee staff, our wonderful, marvelous staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't representing CHEV. So far this year, we're looking at, in your packet, you do have the fiscal status to date that provides you with the numbers to it, and we ended up last year spending about $230,000. This year so far, with the fall semester, we have 35 enrolled students. That includes 14 renewals from the, under the new criteria we instituted last year. We have two directly affected students and then an additional 29 students that were new and at various stages. And so at this point, we have allocated about $182,000 for this year, which is roughly about 80% of what we would projected for. We kind of looked at the amount of money that we have and just kind of did some long-range planning to see how far out it would last. And so far, it's looking like we have enough funds if we kind of move on the regular basis of accepting about 30 new students with an attrition rate of about 15% renewing each year. It should last four to five years. And so that's where we are for this year. Any questions?
Any questions?
I do have a question. What's the timeline typically in a given semester in terms of from the moment we approve to when the money gets shared with the institution?
Madam Chair, yes. And that has been a little bit of an issue. The issue that this scholarship has is that it's by legislative mandate, it can only be used for tuition and fees. And so we have to wait until the student has gotten their financial aid packages and want to make sure that, you know, we do a last dollar determination to make sure we maximize the amount that they receive, but then it needs to be applied first because it can only be applied to tuition, fees, and books. And that requires us to have the institutions report back on the students that, yes, they have enrolled, whether they're full-time, part-time, the number of credits. And then once that takes place, then we try to expedite the disbursement of those funds as quickly as possible.
And that timeline looks like what?
We, Madam Chair, we have some institutions that respond right away and were able to institute that, but we did have one institution that waited until the ad drop deadline of September 3. And as soon as I got that, I turned it back around and, you know, it still needed to work its way through the Department of Accounts to get that out. But we try to expedite as much as we can. One of the things we're looking at is to figure out if there's some way, either we allocate the full amount upfront and then have the institutions refund us, because we did have, we had one student that withdrew. And, you know, if a student is part-time, they don't necessarily get the full $1,000. And we did have one student who received 100% gift aid and didn't qualify for the scholarship. But we needed to ensure that there weren't any other expenses that the student had that scholarship could cover.
So in an instance like that, where a student received 100% gift and our dollars are counted as last dollars but actually applied as first dollars because they are tuition and books, right?
Correct.
How, so because their last dollar qualified, they didn't qualify? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Well, Madam Chair, one of the things that we did different this year than last year is we asked the colleges to report the cost of attendance. And what that includes, that includes the living expenses. So somebody who's living on campus and has most of those dollars billed to them directly, you know, that money would go to the institution, but if they're living off-campus or a community college student. So we make sure that we know what the full calculated amount for that institution. It varies from institution to institution based on the, you know, expenses in the area or the cost of tuition. So we use that full amount. And in the example, the one student, I don't have the exact number, but I think the cost of attendance was about $28,000, and they got $28,000 in gift aid. So all of their expenses, all of their prescribed expenses were covered and did not dictate giving them the scholarship because then it would not be applied towards tuition, fees, and everything, because that was already covered by other gift aid.
Where do books fall on this?
We calculate, and actually, I think we're more generous than the institutions, but we calculate it and it's a prorated amount. So if it's 12 credits or more undergraduate, they get a full $1,800 allowance for the, for each semester. Graduate, it's 1,500 allowance, I'm sorry, other way around. Undergraduate, it's 1,500, and graduate is 1,800. And it's an allowance, it's a reimbursement for books for the student. So they would, assumptions is that they would buy the books and then they have the money. And if the institution would then issue them whatever refund they have to go towards it, they would then pay for the books.
Any other questions?
Does it say it in show up?
It, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Delegate Glass.
Gratitude, Madam Chair. Oh, I believe the staff stated that we are funded for the next five years. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, Madam.
Okay, so question, Madam Chair, is if we are funded for the next five years, is this a conversation that we should be having about FY '28 to consider by that time we'll be at three years' worth of funding and on the legislature, because this is all coming from the purse of the Commonwealth, that we need to be considering how we do that? I think, I believe both funding from the state and wasn't, I do remember the first, there were some federal, yeah, federal funds as well as, I don't know if there are outside gifts that come into this scholarship. So I'm just wondering the fiduciary timeline that we need to be considering to sustain the scholarship.
Madam Chair, yeah, we received $500,000 in federal funding, and we have to spend that by January 3, 2028. And so we prioritize spending those funds first so that we spend them down and don't lose it. We don't have as much of the time restrictions on the state funds that were allocated towards it.
And forgive me, what was the state allocation and how will, once 2028 come about? How will that affect the pot of money that we, what will we be resting our laurels on and being able to gift out from there?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
Yes. Okay, so you said that the federal government gave us $500,000 to spend by 2028. Once 2028 hits, what is our bucket, what will our bucket now look like to allocate towards affected students and family members?
So based on the amount of funds that we dispersed for this fall, we're sitting at just above $3 million, $3,910,000. Obviously, if we spend down that $500,000, we're at two and a half. And again, the projections were based roughly, I think we had talked initially about whether we were going to cap the number of new students we were going to award to the scholarship each year. So far, we've had roughly 30 new students that qualified. So, you know, if we continue on that and if every year 15 come back and then the next year, seven of those come back, kind of projected it out that we're, I think we're fairly confident we have at least definitely four years and probably five years' worth of funding. But we can kind of keep you up to date as the funds, as the funds go along, whether we need to request additional funding for it.
So...
I see you're quoting, you're tracking the way I'm tracking my money.
I'm thinking, right, and we're thinking, should we be proactive in the 2026 budget year with regard to funding for the scholarships, given that we do know more than likely in 2028, we may not get a re-up of the 500 million, will 47 still be?
Madam Chair, so just based off what he said, we'll still have 2.5 million at 2028 to spend out. So looking, I think what he said is looking at the trajectory from that 2.5. The question is, is when he will, you're going to keep us abreast of when we'll actually start having to have fiscal response conversations, because we'll still have 2.5 at 2028.
And I'm just looking at the theory of, once we stop putting money here, getting it back, generically speaking, when budget items kind of go to zero? It's hard to get money back because then it becomes a question of the legitimacy of the program, or is it really needed, or this or that or the other? And so even if it's a smaller amount of money to stay on the budget books, I think it would be prudent to, to at least think about that as we move forward. We've got at least one more meeting before session starts in January, and so we can kind of, but once, once stuff goes to zero, it's really hard to justify bringing it back. And so I just want to make sure that we don't do that and once it, because then it's, well, did we fund it last year? And did we fund it the year before last? And, you know, all of those kinds of things. So even if it's small amounts that we put in the budget to keep the program going, if we have to ask for a larger amount at some point in time in the future, then it would be something that folks are consistently used to giving or putting into, you know, our budget. So it's just something to think about as we move forward with '26 being a budget year, how we, what we ask for. But I just don't, I don't want it to drop off the budget radar, if that makes sense, in terms of, you know, seeing it there. So, because once it drops off, it usually stays off. So, yes. All right, any other questions or comments? Anything else? All right. And so, thank you. Are you, oh, so now we have the application cycle. What are we looking at for 2026 and 2027? Okay, I'm sorry, that's why we have wonderful staff here. I skipped a whole line item. Can we start from my far right all the way to my left and introduce our committee members?
Paris Turner. I don't know what else I'm supposed to say. I'm representing Norfolk, Virginia.
Barbara Lusur Enman, representing Hampton University.
I'm Delegate Anne Farrell-Teta. I represent the 99th District, northeast part of Virginia Beach.
Delegate Chris Runyon and represent all of Highland, all of Bath, most of Augusta, and a southern portion of Rockingham, pleased to be on the commission.
Delegate Jackie Hope Glass, representing the 93rd District, which is portions of the city of Norfolk.
Cam Patterson from Prince Edward County, Virginia, worked with Longwood University and the Moat Museum.
Joan Johns-Cobs, Brown versus Board of Education, 22. Thank you. And I'm Senator Angela Williams Graves, representing the 21st Senate District, which is about 93% of the city of Norfolk. So now we have everybody. All right, so now let's talk about the '26, '27 application cycle. I know there was some conversation about out-of-state applicants, not applicants, but universities, colleges, and universities. And I think that was a CHEV issue, correct? That we were not, if I remember correctly, we were not really able to, due to the regulations of CHEV being the administrator of the program, am I right or am I wrong? of CHEV being the administrator of the program, am I right or am I wrong?
Well, Madam Chair, it was in the legislation that it had to go to in-state tuition. Or, I'm sorry, in-state institutions only.
All right, so we're legislative there. So the conversation is, do we want to make a legislative change that technically would not go into effect until 2026, July of 2026, which would affect applicants in 2027 if we follow the normal path of legislation? And is, is considering students here in Virginia are out-of-state universities off-limits? How do we feel about it? What's the thought?
I believe, I can't remember who it was, I believe it was Delegate Teta, I'm not sure. But when we had this conversation previously, the sentiment was brought up, the fact that people had to leave the Commonwealth of Virginia in order to get an education. And so recognizing that folks had to leave, we should also recognize that those that were here may want to leave the Commonwealth to continue their education even though they were affected. So I think it's good business and understanding the complexities of why we have this scholarship fund and the gymnastics that people had to go through to get their education to allow that mobility of learners, of Virginians that want to pursue their education elsewhere.
Any other comment?
I'd be more supportive if we, if it was students that were domiciled in Virginia that chose to leave versus students that are out-of-state that might choose to take advantage of the scholarship. So we do have a number of students that are lineal descendants but reside outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
So domicile is a recommendation for consideration? Is that yes? Yeah, okay. Delegate Glass?
I'm too, I was going to say Cameron, but I want to use Mr. Patterson's point. So Mr. Patterson's point, another thing is I'm looking at how we, and it's comparable about how we do VMSDEP, right? The military scholarship is, we require at least five years in the Commonwealth, domicile before you can, before you are eligible for, to be able to use that program. So I can see where at least having some residency will, would maybe prevent us from going out of budget on it. But then I still hold in my hands the fact that folks had to leave and that their family lineage might be elsewhere. I think it's a heavy sort of burden for the committee to decide, but I think it's worth having the discussion on both.
Can I say though, I would definitely turn to the legislators in the room because I wouldn't want to do anything that's going to put us in a negative position to be able to continue seeking support for the program. I know when the scholarship was first conceptualized, way back when, I think this was a hurdle to overcome conversationally.
I just have a question. When it was first put into place, were the original students, because a lot of those were direct, they were like the children and grandchildren of the people affected. Do we know if some of those students were out-of-state or were they all in-state?
All in-state.
They were all in-state. See, I, yeah, I do like that. I mean, it's Virginia money going to Virginia schools for Virginia residents, if possible, especially because now we're getting further away from those directly impacted. Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to say, part of this, Madam Chair, part of the discussion was students graduating from the Commonwealth. And I think that's the spirit of what we are trying to make a change here, to say that if you went to school, high school, whatever, and graduated, not even graduated, but lived in Virginia, but say wanted to go to University of Maryland, that we would still support you in your efforts to go there. The mother that came and spoke, I think two meetings, two or three meetings before, was like she had a daughter who did all the things. And we know would verify that they were directly impacted, she was going to the University of Alabama. So she couldn't receive the scholarship and they thought that that was, you know, unfair. And it did feel unfair because she's impacted. She went to school here, this is Virginia. So that's where I lie on the side of what Mr. Patterson is saying, is that at the very minimum, that there's some domicile here, more so than the other side, you know? That's something away. But if they want to leave Virginia to go to school, I think it's worth supporting that. I know that, to Cameron's point, I don't know what the initial conversation was, so anybody who has that historical context, I think would add value to the conversation. Is, does staff have it?
Unfortunately, I do not at this time. I joined the staffing a couple of years ago, Madam Chair. But I can go back to, you know, DLS, other DLS staff and get back to you all.
So initially, I will tell you, I did not favor out-of-state students. Someone said to me, we are just putting the money, we're rotating the money right back through Virginia and we're not giving young people the opportunity to grow if their families were negatively impacted by, when we start talking about descendants. So if we talk about those who are directly impacted and what they had to go through, if their families left Virginia so that they could get an education, that child had nothing to say about it. The parents were just trying to do the best that they could in a bad situation to get their child an education. If they came back to Virginia, finished, we're very, very limited at this point from what I recall in the numbers of directly impacted individuals who are still looking to further their education, right? Most of the directly impacted individuals are retired and maybe they are looking to fulfill their, to continue their education because of their own personal desire to do so, but maybe not necessarily because it will provide them a better work opportunity, you know, or anything like that. So that's one thing. But the directly impacted individuals, one of the reasons we expanded to dependents is, or descendants rather, is because we were, we had this money, it was here, and we weren't using it because the directly impacted, that number was just dwindling. In listening to the conversations about domicile and making sure that we are consistent with other programs, domicile, I could live with if they're domiciled here, but they choose to go to get an education someplace else, we're still helping. Those folks, they stayed through all the crap. They really did. They stayed and just, you know, they just dealt with it. And so I think that that is an opportunity for us to further the spirit of Virginia in other places. If our young people are going off to college and they're representing Virginia, it's an opportunity for them to do so. And I do, I go back, I can't think of the young lady's name, but in addition to that conversation with her and her father, because her father was the one that was impacted, I had a whole long conversation with her in my office one afternoon. And to just hear the pain in her voice of having to struggle to figure out when this was something that her father's unfortunate life circumstances would have provided to his granddaughter. It just put, it put a different spin on how I felt about it. And so if we're interested in really helping to further education and not necessarily interested in, oh, I'm trying to think of the word, recycling money back into the Commonwealth of Virginia at the expense of students, I could live, I could very much live with domicile. You had something, Delegate.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm understood. If it's directly impacted, that's a no-brainer, 100%, and even children, grandchildren. I'm just saying, if going forward as we get further away from those directly impacted and we have limited funds, we should start thinking about trying to have some parameters so we have money for those that are, that were somehow impacted in Virginia. So I just want to, I mean, but directly impacted, we've got to do.
And that number's very small. I mean, realistically, that number is just really, really small. I think we had two this last round of directly impacted. And it's going to keep getting smaller. I mean, realistically, some of those people may not even be alive. So now there is a benefit to their offspring to have an opportunity. And if they live in Virginia and financial aid requires, you determine in-state and out-of-state tuition, right? Based on their financial aid and when they are, where they are domiciled, correct? So if we've got the financial aid and the financial aid determines that they would be domiciled in Virginia yet going to another school, which would then qualify them for out-of-state tuition at another school, right? Which is significantly more expensive. This would be an added benefit to them in that regard. So again, have another meeting or at least one more before session starts to make a recommendation or determination as to how, you know, we want to proceed. But I personally kind of lean towards the domicile piece because directly impacted, at some point, we aren't going to have any. We aren't. Yeah. Anything else? Anyone else? All right. So the next option, our item is satisfactory academic progress. I got that right. Satisfactory academic progress. How we, what a conversation was, I believe we were talking about like one probationary period. And then if they stayed on the party train and not the study train, we would not allow them to. And any other piece about that I will also offer up that might be a consideration is if there's any life impact that prohibited them from making, keeping their satisfactory academic progress. And I don't, I don't know if we're opening up a can of worms in how you determine a life impact, because things impact people differently, right? Some people just power through it. Some people have a whole meltdown. It just, it's different for every person. So I don't know how we determine that, but I'm open to suggestions and whatnot.
I wonder if we have to be the ones to determine that, but rather put that onus on the institution, just knowing that they've probably got a process set up where students are able to appeal those types of things.
That's a good question. I don't know the answer. Do you know the answer?
Yes, Madam Chair. And since the discussion last, I went back and did a little research. So the first year we expanded the program, we asked, just asked the institutions to let us know. If a student met satisfactory academic process. And that's, it's a criteria that's based on the factors for determining whether to qualify for federal student aid. And there's two components to it. One is a quantitative, in other words, are they on pace to graduate within 150% of the degree requirement? So if they're working towards an associate's degree with, that requires 60 credits, they receive aid up until they get up to the 90th credit. And then at that point, they no longer qualify. So that's one component of satisfactory academic progress. The other is grade-based. And that tends to be more of what we're, with the students that we're looking at, is if they're maintaining a GPA of at least a C or better or equivalent of it and in good academic standing. And in answer to your question, for a student that does not pass satisfactory academic progress for the institution, they do have an appeal process that they can apply to. And we did have a new student this year who initially, when we asked for the enrollment verification, they indicated that the student did not meet satisfactory academic progress. And then I checked back with them about a month later, the student had appealed and the appeal had been denied. So it is, the institutions at this point are the ones that are determining that. The other thing that I did is because we have, satisfactory academic progress is usually based on prior performance at that same institution. So we've kind of differentiated between students that are first time in college, so, you know, coming from high school or whatever, you know, the institution doesn't necessarily have satisfactory academic progress on them to begin with. So the student kind of starts with a clean state as they're going from it. We also have students who transfer from one institution to another. And again, the institution doesn't have any previous academic, I mean, they, obviously the student transferred and they accepted the transcript from before, but most institutions, if you transfer, you don't start on academic probation, usually have time to prove yourself in that particular institution's environment. And then, you know, the third group are the ones that had been there before and are returning. And that was the case for this one student, is that their previous academic performance at the same institution did not meet their requirements. So the student was not qualifying for federal student aid and thus did not qualify for the scholarship.
Thank you. Any comment on, I struggle with if they didn't qualify for federal financial aid, is our $10,000 or $5,000 or however many thousand dollars going to really make a big, are they going to still even be able to attend college if they don't? I mean, most folks don't have like Daddy Warbucks writing a check. So if they don't get federal financial aid, how does this, is this even an issue, I guess? Is it enough to keep them in school?
Madam Chair, for that student in particular, they did go to a state institution and, you know, I mean, potentially the $10,000 could make up the difference, but then, you know, it's a question of, is the student on progress to continue earning towards the degree? And, you know, because we do require them to be enrolled in a program of study, which means they're on a path to degree completion. And satisfactory academic progress, either, you know, they're, most of the times, it's the grades, it's not that they've taken too many credits.
Delegate Glass?
No, I was just going to speak to that. Like I think.
Your mic.
Is it on? Oh, there you go. No. There it is. New to this college game, as I'm going through with my little citizen, is that I think every, if a student has satisfactory academic requirement, then every dollar counts, even if they don't. Like for us, we didn't qualify for, they said you can have a $5,000 loan, that's it, we're not giving you too much else. And we forego that, but any dollars that that boy could bring in for us, it all matters when we talk about housing and then the books and then the, like, it just all piles up and eating and all these different things. So I think if we are to go down the road of, I think the discussion before was, knowing that the scope is going to be narrowed, at some point, we're going to have to figure out how we allocate these dollars in a way that makes sense, because we may not have as much money to give, because we may not have as many people that are eligible, that I think it's fair to say, are you on track in some ways, some way, shape or form to make you eligible? Because we're not requiring essay, we're not required, we don't have, this is a very low lift scholarship. Is that fair to say? It's very low lift. So the ask is just, you know, keep trucking along. And if that requirement you said is like at least a 2.0 or something like that from the institution is going to coordinate with you all to let us know what that is, I think it's fair to add that to the list of, hey, just got to keep trucking along and good progress to maintain this scholarship.
Any other input, comment? Speak now, forever hold your peace. All right, thank you for the explanation. Okay, so I think it's safe to say that at least one of the two bullet points, we're in agreement, general agreement with satisfactory academic progress being. I agree, I hadn't thought about what you said, like, there's no essay, there's no community service, there's no, you just fill out a form, you show lineage and, you know, I, if you can't manage satisfactory academic progress, then, yeah, okay, I'm good with that. But is that, am I hearing that as generically a agreement that folks are in agreement with satisfactory academic progress being? Yes, kind of?
Yes.
Kind of. Yeah. Michael, do we need any kind of motion vote or anything? What, for recommendation? Okay. So we're good, we're good on that one. Okay. So the only thing that we have outstanding in a manner of speaking is what we're going to do with how we're going to determine out-of-state applicants or out-of-state institutions, I should say. We'll, we'll determine that. Okay. We do have a member of the public that has signed up to speak. And so if that individual would come forward to speak.
I'm assuming that would be.
Come on down to the podium.
In one moment. I need to stay in here for a second. I really do. Before I approach that podium.
Okay. All right. We got you. Take your time.
I need to say. I'm glad to see green is in this room because that means growth. I'm glad to see green cheers. But I'm sad. I'm sad you did disappoint. And I mean disappointed. You asked when I come to the podium to please state my name. My name is Ozetta Celester Smith-Ransom. And if I seem to get a little emotional because everything you all were discussing back there cut me like a knife, and you have no idea. None. None. And I mean none. And I personally need to thank one person that has been listening to me and my granddaughter. Her name is Mr. Waller. I am so thankful for her. She has done an outstanding job. I have called other people. I have even called you, Senator Grace, and left a message because my granddaughter and my son feels that they are being discriminated against. And let me tell you how. Because she has called, she has sent emails. This is my granddaughter. She's in school. She's 19 years old. She just turned 19 on the 22nd of August. She's only seven credits away from being a junior. She does not play. She's not allowed to. That's not our standards or our expectations. I never thought that I would be standing here where my parents had to stand 60, 50-some years ago. And I'm still standing here advocating for education. And I can't believe it. So I told my granddaughter, I said, look at it this way, sweet pea. And my son, that is an educator as well. So when you were talking about the format of should the individual receive the money? Because he's being discriminated against because he doesn't live in the state of Virginia, but wants to go back to school to get his doctoral and has six degrees already. And I personally have to thank Mr. Kemp, Scott Kemp. And I would believe that's you, sir, right? Correct? Yes. My name is Ms. Ransom. I have called you a number of times, 10 times. I would suggest to you that you change your voicemail. It is belittled. It is belittling. It's hateful. It's mean. It hurts. I don't have time. But what else you get? I got time. I made time to get here. I made time to get here because it's important to me. It's important to the standards that my family have. And Mr. Patterson, you may know my family. You say you're here from Prince Edward County? Yeah, that's where I'm originally from. So you all, as I said, you have no idea what I've gone through. So if you wonder why I stand here, it's because the money that is, has been allocated, and you're correct, the direct descendants, they're no longer here. You know where they are? Primarily, all of them are sleeping in their graves. And my family is one of them. They walked out of that school and rebuilt it personally, brick by brick. Because that's their, that's their master base and there is a master copper dress. They took it, just like I had to take it. Because of the pigmentation of my skin, the mulatto of what is, what is within me. It's mean, it's hateful. So when you all were talking, I was sitting back there listening and it was cutting me. And I told Ms. Waller today, I said, Ms. Waller, I'm going to stand up, but I can't promise you what's going to come out of my mouth because it's not going to be, this is going to be speaking. It's literally the people that stood for me. So I will have the ability to be able to stand here in front of this committee and say, please think when you're making decisions, what is best for the descendants of the individuals that stood for a better education? Do you all understand? Do you have any idea what I'm talking about? Because if you don't, let me brand a cross in your yard. Let me put a noose in, have somebody put a noose in your yard because they're intimidated because you're standing. My father and mother personally work, worked, worked and walked with Martin Luther King, President Kennedy, President Johnson, even Donald Trump. So please make a great choice, a decision that's going to impact people's lives. And it's kind of interesting, all of us are educators, including me. And I don't even have a full degree. Each one of my children have six. Do you have any questions for me? I feel better now that I've spoken with you all. And if you had somebody that was on the committee that's actually been through what I've been through, actually counseling? Because as you stated when you were speaking earlier, Mr. Patterson, there's state parks there in Prince Edward County. But do you know when they were the Caucasian side or as they say, the cracker side and the nigger side of it? Guess where I stood? Where did I stand? Because I'm none of them. I'm just a human being and that's what I teach. Because my family comes from all ethnic backgrounds. Does anyone have any questions for me? Because I sure got a bunch for you all. And like number one, and personally, if I may ask you.
Ma'am?
That one?
You may direct your questions to.
All right. Senator Grace, my granddaughter applied for the scholarship, was awarded the scholarship back in May. She was so happy because she wants to honor her grandparents and me. She wouldn't have never known about it if it wasn't for me. But she said, Omar, all I've gotten is silence. I've called, I've written emails and nobody's answered me. And she said she would be here today, but she's in class. I told her, no, I'll go advocate for you. She wants to know, why just can't somebody call her back? Why didn't somebody call me back? I ain't that busy. I'm not.
So, so let me make sure I understand. Your granddaughter applied for the scholarship, did not get a rejection or approval letter?
She did. She got, she, she, she was rewarded from Mrs. Waller. She received the letter, the email.
Okay.
My granddaughter has a 4.0 GPA. Like I said, she's only 19, she's almost a junior. She's literally honoring me and her grandparents because I didn't finish my degree.
So we'll work on finding out why no one called her back?
No, I want to know why nobody has called me back either.
And we can work on that as well.
How long is that going to take? Another five months?
I don't have an answer for you on that. But could you, if you have other questions, please ask them.
Okay. So when you all are about to make the decision or have the discussion, my son is on the flip side. He lives in one state. He went to school here in the state of Virginia. Went here, actually graduated, has two degrees from here. Actually went to school on for a scholarship. But he was chosen, the state of Maryland chose him to come there to teach. He's one of the youngest principal teachers to go. Then he became assistant principal. He runs one of the largest, the second largest school in the state of Maryland. He wants his PhD. He said, Omar, I don't know how, Mama, I don't know how I'm going to get this money. I said, I'm going to help you get this money. I said, because you're deserving of it. I said, because you're honoring me and you're honoring your grandmother and grandfather. So I'm asking if you, when you get ready to make that decision, think about what I'm saying. He is responsible for 2,700 students and he's only 38 years old. I have a daughter that's an educator. She's 35 years old. She has six degrees, five degrees as well, five or six degrees as well. She was elected teacher of the year, rookie teacher of the year. Then she was elected teacher of the year. Now she's the spokesperson for that county that she works for. So when you're thinking about the descendants and the lineage, the ghosts behind this, please think about us. I have other cousins that won't even come and speak because it hurts them. So I stand and speak for them. It hurts.
Doggy Glass.
I want you to finish.
I'm, I'm really, really glad the opportunity happened because it opened a major door. And I will pray and hope there's a spot on a committee. This committee especially, because I would love to serve on it. Because I have a different impact of thinking than, oh, do we spend this money? Oh, do we spend that money? Where should the money go? Well, I can help you tell you real fast where the money go. As the good grass says, every dollar counts. Every dollar. Parking tickets, parking passes, there's things that they pay for that people have no idea. Just alone on top, my granddaughter, we gave her $1,500 just to get her stuff together, 15 to $2,000 just for stuff that she needs out of her scholarship that she's already in school on. And then she's worried about the money that is due. And she received the letter from the financial aid department that is getting ready to go to a collection agency. And that's not going to happen on our watch. None. And then I asked, and Ms. Waller told me, she said, well, it's the school that didn't get back in contact with us. Well, why wasn't the information shared with Ms. Gooden? She's just being annoyed and she doesn't like it. And we're teaching her to advocate for herself. She said, Omar, I can't be there. I have to go to class. She said, but I know you'll go speak. She said, I know you will. She said, because you always got my back. And I'm always going to have her back. So if, if that scholarship is not applied, then we're going to pay the bill, the remaining of it. And then we're going to write some letters and tell how she was treated, how I've been treated, and I have all the documentation to support it. And I'll go to whoever, wherever I need to, to do it, even if I got to stand alone by myself. Okay?
Doggy Glass.
First, take a deep breath. Ms. Ransom, gratitude.
Thank you.
For taking the time. And I know your family is proud of you. And I just want to say that every feeling that you have is valid. Not that you need to know that, you know it's valid. And we are appreciative of you coming here. And I know your children and grandchildren are proud of you for advocating on the family's behalf. I wanted to also underscore like your passion and what you're saying. I want to make sure that we as a committee have some actionable items because I'm trying to take, I'm taking notes and listening to where, because you've expressed to the chair that there's one, it sounds like one off top, just communication, right? Communication and managing your expectations. But I also want to point to you, I want to give you, because in our folder, they give us legislatively what was put out and set forth about this scholarship prior to any one of us being a part of this. So like, we're working with the fact that when this came into play, it didn't look like 2025, right? The people are different, the times are different, the needs are different. And so our work here is to change what has been. And I want you to have this because it's in my packet and you can have it so that you can look at that and see that you don't even have to be on this community to, to impact that. Like, we, we can collectively take into account what, what you're thinking, your ideas. Because right now, what you're sitting and going through is that process of us just trying to figure it out based off our, and I never went to college the traditional way, the military was my way. So I am learning to the plight of just taking those steps of getting into school without the underscore, the underbelly of, of having to deal with desegregation. I come from the Chicagoland area. But I do want to point to Ms. Cobb down the way, who was a plaintiff on, on Brown. So we have people here, your experience are here, but also your, you are probably one of the most valuable parts of us trying to get this closest to right as we, we need that in order to take this step. And as I think the chair said, we're going to meet one more time. And we've got other things like, so for clarity, I want you to be participatory, which you're already doing. And I'm, like I said, I, I think it's the, the exact right time that you showed up while we're in the, you, you came at the exact right time and I'm glad it was you. The, the universe has a funny way, but for the sake of us, like us being able to do something, because I don't want you to leave here and we're not managing your expectations like nothing happens other than a phone call, right? Or some explanation, is I, I'm trying to sort out, tease out, what is it that your granddaughter didn't receive the scholarship or did because of the requirements, which is something that we're discussing now? And is the frustration, you know, your, your, your frustration with this for your son, the fact that he doesn't qualify for it? So if you can hit those notes that we can do something with, right? Outside of the communication, what are the things that we can do something with or that we can add to our conversation based off of your lived experience?
Okay. Number one would be, we're in the 21st century as Senator Grace said, communication is number, the key. Communication. Specific, direct information is, appears to be too much back and forth. A doesn't know what B doing, B doesn't know what A doing. There needs to be a bridge where the individuals work well together. Because from what I understand, one person handles out the acceptance letters and the other party handles out the money. There's a huge gap in there between it. The only way that I was able to get anything out from pertaining to the financial part was that I had to go through Ms. Waller. Lauren Waller. Because she had to send me, she called me back after she had spoken with Mr. Kemp. That shouldn't be the case. Why did Ms. Waller have to intercede on Mr. Kemp's part? Why didn't Mr. Kemp return my phone call or return Mrs. Gooden's phone call? Why is that? Communication. Communication between, I'm going to say, staff or the individuals that are responsible for the allocation of the funds, the receiving of the funds. Because when we go back and check Mrs. Gooden's records for financial aid, the school doesn't have everything, but she has sent in everything and she keeps a copy of everything. So then the next factor is would be, like for my son, he's a direct descendant of, why would he be discriminated against? Because he chose, he was picked to move to the state of Maryland to better education, to better, to improve. He's one of the leading top person who went to Maryland and turned all their testicles So why would he be discriminated against for his doctoral, for this to assist him, to help it, because so he can make a greater impact? Just because he lives in the state of Maryland, he's not allowed to receive it? That's what he's being told. I had to tell him that. He said, but Mama, I'm a direct descendant. I said, you are. I said, but according to the qualifications. I said, but according to the qualifications of the guidelines that's in place now, that's how it stands. So that's what, and then a piece, I'm gonna ask you all to really, really think about. That some people, like unfortunately, my aunts, my uncles, their parents did the best thing they did, could. And they had to send them, their children away to get a better education. And they had to leave home. They were, some of them was only thirteen or fourteen years old. And they sent them to other family members because they had to get an education. It's no, no other way. So it's the same thing happening again. And it feels like discrimination. Okay? It's a question.
Are there any? Yes, yes, please. And, um, make sure that you hit your button so that we can hear. Yes, there you go.
Okay. Um, Ms. Ransom, my name is Joan Johns-Cobs. I grew up in Prince Edward County. I was one of the people that walked out of school. And I wanted to know who of your ancestors that you're talking about that, that went to Moden High School and walked out?
I was trying not to refer that because that's their privacy. But because you asked me, I will use their last name. They're one of the largest families that's in Prince Edward County.
Scott family?
The Eames family.
The Eames family, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I know the Eames family.
Yes, ma'am, I am the direct descendant of one of the twenty-one.
Okay.
The other family is the Smith family.
Smith, uh.
Yes.
Charlie Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Hugh Smith? I know, I know, uh.
Yes, they're all my uncle.
Yes, I know the family.
Yes, they're my uncle, yes.
Yes, well, I can empathize with you.
Yes, they're mine, yes.
Because three of my brothers-in-laws were affected by the school closing. So I know exactly how you're feeling. And that's why I wanted to ask you who your family was.
Yes.
So that, you know, I could find out exactly who, you know, what happened. And there were a lot of Eameses. And I don't know how many were affected by the school closing.
They couldn't even read.
I'm sorry?
They couldn't even read, they couldn't read. I had to teach my uncles and aunts how to read.
Yes.
I was a little girl at seven years old, and they were grown adults, and they didn't know how to read.
Yes.
It hurts. Now they get honorary degrees. No, honorary PhDs.
Well, uh, I have a question. Did some, some of your family apply for the scholarships and were denied?
No, some of them actually received, um, it when they were direct descendants. Direct, that would be my cousins.
Direct, but, but their children, how about their children?
No, because they made sure their children went to school because it wasn't open to them. It just came open to us. It just literally came open to the.
To the children of the.
Right. The kids that used the cousins, right, yes, ma'am. So all of them, we made sure that everybody has gone to school. There's more professors, doctors, lawyers, nurses. One of my cousins didn't run the jail in Prince Edward County. That's why important and passionate it is to me.
I understand. Because like I said, I was affected also, not by the school closing, but by what happened in Virginia.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, it makes me emotional too, thinking and listening to your story.
I told Ms. Waller, um, my parents put me in counseling because, um, they found out that I was being picked on. Because my hair hangs down to my back. And in the wintertime, my pigmentation of my skin goes lighter. So people were often like, what are you? And I had to say, I'm just a human being. So in the impact of saying that, you understand, you understand, even though it was later, the schools opened back up in 1960. People were scared, afraid to send their children. And I know, I said, tore my nerves off. And she has a nervous condition from it right now. Because when she went back to school, they were still hateful, they were mean. They would say ugly things, rude things, disrespectful things. It affects my brother, he was born in 1964. He's worse, his behavior is worse than mine. He's the smart, one of the smartest man I know, though. He can take a whole car apart and put it back together. But the part of him not being able to be educated properly on the behalf of Prince Edward County affected us. And I'm fifty, fifty-seven years old, and I'm standing here, and I found out how much it did. Because I thought I had gathered out my system. But when I'm standing here in front of you all, I felt that I haven't. Oh, I understand a whole lot. I understand tremendously. And I found out still now, in today's time, as she says, in the 21st century, people still, still are being mean. And I say disrespectful, but I can't be. Because I was taught to be disrespectful. No matter what you do to me, I have to be respectful. Because that's what my arm, my mother and father taught me. That's what my grandmother and my grandfather taught me. And those are the principles and the values and the morals that we stand on. You treat me wrong, I'm gonna treat you extra sweet. Because karma is something else, and it can be real, real ugly.
So Ms. Ransom?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to take the opportunity, um, on behalf of the Commonwealth, to first apologize. All of this happened before I was even born. And, um, we are still dealing with the fallout of the Brown versus Board of Education decision, the actions that led up to that. We are still decades later dealing with the, the fallout from that. So I want to apologize for whatever it may be worth that your family had to experience that, um, just because people didn't want black and white kids to go to school together, right? Who really didn't know the difference between being black and white, they were just kids. And they didn't, they didn't, they didn't know. And, and this was all the adults. I think you said somewhere that one of your kids said, grownups screw everything up.
They do.
Yeah, I remember you said that. And, and, and clearly, the grownups screwed this up. And, and it has had, um, traumatic repercussions, um, for decades. And I, and I want to thank you for coming. We rarely have, um, public input in this, um, in this committee. We, we don't have a lot of folks who come and share their story and, and their testimony, and probably to the dismay of, uh, some of us who are.
That's just the timer went off.
Oh. Um, uh, some of the, the staff who have, you know, who are respectful of decorum in the, in the Senate. Um, but we've, we've let, allow some leeway because we can see and hear, um, the emotion, the pain, and feel the, the trauma in, in some of the customs and norms of what we, you know, what we normally do. But what I will say to you is, we will consider strongly all of what you have brought to us, um, as we move forward, in deliberating on how we spend these funds, how, what parameters are acceptable or not acceptable. Unfortunately, maybe, yeah, unfortunately, it is not just up to me. It is a committee. And then once, um, the issues, if they're legislative, come before the committee and we decide on legislation, on any legislative change, it goes before the full body, in our general assembly session. But I also want to, to echo Delegate Glass's sentiments in that we appreciate your input because it is lived experience that helps us to better. I, I'm one that went to school as an adult, didn't, didn't do the traditional, um, high school. I, I decided to run off and get married, okay? And that didn't work.
It's okay, though.
It's okay, it is okay. But I, but, but to hear the experiences of folks who are descendants, who were directly impacted, who, you know, we, we know the stories from other, from, from some folk. But for people and their families who've been directly impacted is very important. So I thank you for that. And for all that you have given us to consider, um, we will consider, we will deliberate. And we, we, I, I can't make a promise on what the outcome will be. But we will, but know that your words have been heard. And that, um, we will work on the communication piece. That is definitely something internally, we can work on, um, the communication piece. And, um, as, as far as the rest in terms of awards and criteria, we'll take that up and we will definitely take it into consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna say this, my, I tell my children, everything happens for a reason. It's always on time. And I call this a teachable moment, not just for them, but also for me. Because I never thought I would have to be standing here. But I'm glad I am. So if there's something else I can do, please let me know.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public testimony? We don't get many guests in this committee, so any others? All right. Our next meeting, it shows here that we're gonna be at the Moat Museum. I am not a hundred percent certain that that is going to actually happen. But we're gonna work through and see what, um, we may be able to do with that. And, um, and then go from there. Please be on the lookout to all the committee members, please be on the lookout for your emails for any requests for availability for dates and things. Because that really helps us to plan and we have to have a quorum in order to make any decisions. So those things are very important. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns, or issues from the committee? Nope. All right, well, this meeting is adjourned.